... Most of this previously, like, uh, two seven, you best to take the road that took place last Thursday in, uh, uh, first thing room, where the state had mentioned a few different options, uh, about how to address the safety of the pedestrians along Washington Avenue, two seven. They intend on repaving the roadway, making improvements to the traffic lights, uh, on the entire length. They offered a few different options, um, we're going to be reviewing those, we're going to hear the traffic, uh, and we actually came up with an option ourselves, when we give the input back to the state, uh, we're going to just issue from court. Nothing else? Anything? Can you give your name? Now, please.
For about a year and a half now, I've been asking that the excise board meeting be conducted. I called the ABC Board, and the ABC Board said they have no open cases. I would like to know why Caribbean essence on Heckle Street has done so many violations on the ABC law, underage drinking, 200 people on a block residential, locking the doors on police officers, they have so many infractions, and I'm demanding why we are not having an excise board meeting. That's it. I guess I get no answers as soon as it goes out.
Joe. Thank you.
Well, when I talked, they told me no one did it. I'd like to see it in writing, please.
Tom, go ahead.
Kev, just, you know, drawing Hoover, I don't know, do you have, uh, drawlin' on the, on the board at all with the UK?
I brought that issue up upon hers, uh, being here because, but, I think that will be something, uh, uh, yeah.
I mean, especially you come over from Hoover, and, you know, I mean, I know the guys are throwing pot hoes, but, but, it's, like, almost, almost impossible.
I asked them to maybe roll up, because, uh, it used to be a mess.
Okay, thank you.
I guess you know what you, uh...
Yeah, uh, Kev, just to kind of add to what you said about the, uh, the DOT, uh, and the work they want to do in Washington, uh, we were able to get them to come down from, uh, a seven-year lead time on that project to, uh, plus N2, you know, because it's such a congested area, so...
So five quarters to the state.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No holes that you can see without probably five twenty-sixty.
Yeah, 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 sure.
Anything else? Thanks, Steve. Communications?
Communications, uh, request received, communication is charged, but conditions to conduct a possession of patients of the property is a breach of agency.
Very much. Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
I put the letter of resignation received from Jimmy Lombardi from the transportation.
Very much, yes. Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders for introduction?
Orders for introduction. Orders for, uh, with orders creating position for adoption, reclassification, concentration, fine.
Are you motioning for introduction?
Second.
Quick rule.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Orders number one, for final reading, I recommend that the council, um, defeat that. It has to be republished. There is a type of regretful error that amounts to a significant error, uh, in adoption of itself.
Well, why don't we revisit and then defeat it now?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we revisit and defeat it now?
Yes, yes, defeat it now.
Until we have to...
Then don't look for public error, then, just public error, then defeat it.
Okay. Push it off to the project meeting.
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Are you motioning for public representation?
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number one, to set to the final reading and order to the chapter, the article, then the chapter eight, traffic section two, paragraph nine, parking time limited on certain streets.
Are you motioning for final adoption?
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
No.
Kevin Kennedy?
No.
Nattari?
No.
Rogell?
No.
Jim Oliver?
No.
Mayor Kimball?
Are you motioning for public representation?
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogell?
Yes.
Jim Oliver?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
This, Mayor, council, we, um, at least by the library was finally fixed, there's about something to handle. But, you know, for many years, I've been telling you, stop paving these streets unless you fix the infrastructure, the water mains and the sewer line. Now, you just paved Academy Street not too long ago, right in front of number one fifty, you've got to leak, it's over a month. But about a month ago, when I saw it, I thought maybe there was still some snow that was melting. But I go down there every day, and it's right in front of one fifty. It's leaking right from the center of the street, you see, it's going to both sides of the street. So once again, you know, especially in campaign time, you like to put that black asphalt so it looks good, but you're not taking care of the problem underneath. So once again, please, fix the water mains and the sewers before you pace any streets. Now, in the back of the DAB building on Mill Street, there's two boats, all sealed up in plastic wrap, there's front end loaders, other construction equipment. This is town property. Who, you know, did he, I'm beyond...
We were over at a little league opening the other day, and, uh, also the town manager, we observed that equipment that was over there in the boats, and we were making an attempt to find out who we lost and get it out.
Look, it was brought up by another resident quite a while ago. Now, I don't know, an attempt to make it, there's license plates on it. And we're looking for, we're looking to find out...
We're going to find out and monitor the move.
Should have been found, it's, it's a matter of a minute, go on the computer, find out who it is.
That's, really, that's not my job, but we're going to do, what public officials are doing.
Well, it's public property, and somebody...
Yes, we know that.
So I think the council should direct the town manager and the police chief to immediately, to find out. Because this has been going on a while, from brought up, that's publicly at this meeting. Um, here we are, maybe two years now, that cell tower that was put over by smaller avenue, you know. At that time, the town attorney said that, that they got no proof, they should be given tickets every day. But as often as they, whatever happened to that situation?
That was approved by the zoning board.
It was approved.
That was approved by the zoning board.
Definitely approved.
Was it done after the fact?
No, it was done before it was put up.
Yep.
Then why was it, the town attorney talked that night, he said he should be taken...
Are you talking about me or another town attorney?
You.
I, I think those approvals were given eight or nine years ago.
Well, when it was brought up at a moment's meeting, they said they should be given tickets, that's true, right? And all.
I think the discussion could have been about the vehicles part of the town property.
Yeah, the vehicle.
The investigation on the vehicles part of the town property, by the owner of that property, because their cell towers.
But, well, that was more recent.
That was certainly more recent.
The town lot was next to the lot that the cell towers, huh?
Absolutely right.
And they were using it as a farm there.
Correct.
Is that still being done?
It is not, that, they have not used at all, not...
All right, finally, the, um, Mr. Mayor, the senior citizen, phony senior citizen project up there, we, we now determine they restricted, uh, there's a big article in the record today about people trying to get, one guy trying to get eighteen thousand, another guy seventy thousand in Sandy A for actual property they've lost in the sand. This developer is getting, now, what for six million, ten point two to build Paul Senior Citizen Housing. Um, what are you doing to stop this project? If you were, this, this is the invitation you sent out, you signed with the county executive, saying this is the first ever senior residence in Belleville.
That's good.
And you signed it. That's not true. What's being done about it?
About software projects?
But about, you know, last week, I called up...
I didn't do nothing about something, eighteen million dollar project in Belleville. Uh, it's good for the town, there's nothing illegal about it, the contractor made application to the state. It, we didn't make application at all. Nobody comes to Belleville, it all goes to the contractor, the zoo, this project, so I didn't do nothing about it.
You sent out this invitation, you signed it, that it was senior housing housing.
Oh, okay. It takes a certain...
Mr. Grant Antoni, you've been, you've used the word phony and fraud with regard to this project way too many times to, to walk away from it tonight. You cite, you cite the municipal land use law as to your definition of what composes a senior citizen. The lending agencies, however, do not. What this is, is, is fifty-five and older, and I think the income is going to be about thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. Now, as a practical matter, um, there is, uh, probably not a fifty-five-year-old that's going to qualify, um, uh, making thirty-eight thousand dollars. What's, what's, as a practical matter, what's going to happen is that people who are older, sixty-two, sixty-five, seventy, who are on social security, maybe collecting about twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, and who got pension of, let's say, fifteen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand dollars, they're going to be able to live in this beautiful new housing. So in effect, it will be for senior citizens, but the cutoff age at the bottom is fifty-five. Now, you talk about Sandy money, I don't think anybody from Mantleloke, Point Pleasant, Keansford, uh, Union Beach is going to uproot their family and come to Belleville to move into that particular project. That land has laid dormant, as you well know, you're, you're familiar with the land of the town, has been dormant for a hundred years. Nothing has ever been there. Uh, the result of this mayor and this governing body engaging in a developer three years before Sandy ever occurred by, by, uh, by bringing a developer in, vetting him, uh, doing what the zoning, what had to be done, getting the approvals ready, lo and behold, when this calamity hits, uh, New Jersey, uh, superstorm Sandy, money came in. Now, what happened with that Sandy money from the federal, from the federal perspective is that nine counties in New Jersey qualified for it. And of course, Monmouth, Ocean, Italy, a lot of those counties did, but you know what county also did? Essex County. So this money was earmarked for Essex County. Now, should the town of Belleville have said, you know, let's send this money to Milburn, let's send it to East Orange, let's send it to West Caldwell or West Orange, Belleville finally got a piece of the pie, thanks to this man, and his, like, the relationship that he forged with the county executive and the government. So, that, those projects had, you needed a certain amount of points to qualify, and you had to submit your, your, your papers, not only to the county, but to the state and the federal government. And lo and behold, this developer that you call a phony or a fraud, he qualified. As a matter of fact, they just closed on the first aspect of this law. It's not a phony, it's not a fraud, it's going to be maybe age-restricted on paper, but actually, it will be sixty-five and older. And what did the developer say? Well, if you can prove that you were affected by, by Sandy, you'll get three months' rent, uh, your first three months. But if there are any people that were affected by Sandy, Belleville people are going to get that, uh, whatever you call it. And like Mayor Kimball just said, was Belleville supposed to turn? Who in this room wants Belleville to turn its back on eight, on an eighteen million dollar project? Raise, okay, there you go. Mrs. Grant Antoni, and Mrs. Burke. May I ask your opinion?
Yes.
I may introduce the chair, first of all. I'm Mr. Burke, and I am chair...
Five minutes is up.
Wait a minute.
No, this is not a debate.
No, because he stands up, he's not an elected official, and he answers all the topic, I'm tired of this. Number one, it was not a dormant, it's a private property.
Your five minutes is up.
Not, because you were, you don't want the truth, Mr. Mayor? It was not a dormant, that was a senior citizen plate, that was the picnic area.
I know, I know. We're not senior citizen leaders.
And it's, and it's not true, there's no income eligibility. The developer said at public meetings, but it's, it's, you know, it's market rate housing. So he keeps saying, he keeps on, nobody elected him. And he better keep wanting to say it's a legal opinion, because he's a hundred percent wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Grant Antoni. Mr. Grant Antoni.
And I would be...
You're wrong.
No, you're wrong.
You're wrong.
And I'm, I'm going to use the word as, as a court...
And you will know, there was a senior citizen project approved here by the planning board, here's what was it, Rogan?
Mr. Grant Antoni, I'm going to, you should sit down now.
Well, then tell him not to lie. He's not going to, he's not going to have the last word when it's untruthed about...
You just finish.
He's not going to, he's not going to get, ever going to get away with it. But you don't know what he's talking about, and he's, he's actually a stupid guy.
Excuse me, through the chair. Mr. Kimball? Mr. Mayor? What the people do not know is that the senior housing, if we get twenty families from Belleville there, we're very lucky. Because this is for the entire county, it's not for Belleville. If it was for the entire county, then I, of course, I'd want Belleville there first. We are going to have county residents from all over on that senior property. That's the truth. And it is age-restricted and not senior housing. You can laugh all you want, what's wrong with that? Nothing, it's that Belleville should be having the seniors. People are moving out of here because they can't afford to live here.
Why should they say money is something that...
But you should have said that from the beginning. No, I didn't, I was against it, I was going to bring my shovel here.
Mrs. Grant Antoni.
First of all, that senior property in the backwoods, because I used to take my dad there when they had the... The senior citizen, it's just that for picnic area. I was at the senior building all the time with my father, because he couldn't walk, so I used to take him and go with him. And they did utilize the back part of that property. So for Mr. Murphy to say that that property was not utilized is, is false statement, because it was. I'm enough upset about that, because I have more to say about it, but I won't right now. Uh, resolution number five, what is that, about water metering?
Any questions?
Yeah, we, um, purchasing plastic meters, additions to the meters that were sold. We ran short on some of the meters as part of the project, just to complete all the upgrades, uh, so that every one of the homes and businesses and buildings in town will have the modern meters. Uh, we went from a workforce of three meter meters currently down to one, and eventually, when all these new meters are completed, the project is one hundred percent done, we won't have a need for a meter, meter anymore, as a result of the new electronic process where the meters are, like, dialed in, uh, to, to, they send this electronic signal to us. So, uh, this just completes that project, that's, that's really all concerned.
And, uh, the, uh, parking lot across the street from Town Hall, that's over by that lounge mat, I had to use it one night. How could anybody put up a parking lot without lights? It is pitch black in that parking lot. If there's no lights at all, then could something be done about them? Because that is the danger.
I, you mean one over here, right?
Uh, I don't know which way we're saying. The one, the lounge mat near that restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
Over there.
I think the reason I say, Kev, we're not working...
No, there's no lights, because it's not even on the, um, on the plans, because I saw the plans. They were never put in there when they built the parking lot.
There's one light on the street, on the street light facing into the parking lot.
It does not light the parking lot.
I know, I know. It doesn't go back.
Yeah, put a flood.
Oh, uh, contact Public Service, you know.
And put a flood in.
Public Service is going to go on our property and put one?
Yeah, but put a flood in.
If you have a pole in the street, it can have a commercial light.
There is one there, but it doesn't reach the back.
It doesn't reach the back at all, it's dark back there.
A high time.
Public to two. Sorry, shorty, all the roads are...
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Eddie Tickerella, the mayor. I'd like to know why, what, Eddie wasn't done about the rats running around in Silver Lake. They're like this, they're in school number four, they're on Belmont Avenue, they're on Franklin Street, they're all over. Why isn't that been done?
Kev, did you get any reports on it?
Last summer, we could have an issue with rats, the rats, as a, as a, just to, uh, have the population in the community. And our health officer has your home, obviously, you have a constitution, you have a, especially in Silver Lake, and, uh, has started debates about the region. Uh, the other issue is that, as a result of a lot of these vacant abandoned homes that were foreclosed upon by banks, are in the process of foreclosure, the property has become overgrown, so our public works department did a lot of clean cleaning. Last summer, I haven't heard any complaints about rats, uh, since September.
That's not true. I called the board of health a month ago.
In January?
Well, no, maybe February or early March. And other residents on Belmont Avenue, number four school is loaded with rats.
What's the board of that, really?
I don't know, because I'm not a public official, I'm only a, a grandmother.
We'll, we'll have our, we'll have our health secretary go, go over there.
But when I called the board of health, they told me nobody called for me, and that's not true. And another thing, why would you people, council members, turn down a million dollars from the New Jersey Transit Authority to build a Belleville firehouse? Am I wrong? Does anybody know what you're writing in the go at their screen?
Yeah, we do. Ask Mrs. Burke.
You know what? Maybe I did, Mayor.
Oh, is it an answer?
You have all your students in the audience, why can't I have a few?
Oh, I take offense to that. I take offense to that.
I am waiting, I'm talking, I'm talking about the public works men.
Let the woman speak, please.
And another thing, why was the firehouse closed? When we had two firehouses, New Jersey Transit...
We have three firehouses.
Oh, three, I'm sorry. Why, why close a firehouse?
Well, well, what? Initially, I know it was closed for manpower.
Right, right.
But it was condemned. When it was time to vote, the friendly house wasn't open. Why wasn't the friendly house open? We went back to the firehouse. And why you hire outside firemen when we got dedicated firemen?
I don't know if you know what you're talking about. We just, we just got a court order where we're able to hire Belleville residents.
Oh, good.
So the last two exams, or the last two sets of firemen we put on, and police officers, are Belleville residents.
Oh, good, I heard neither outside firemen, outside residents, I'm sorry.
No, we're not, not in Belleville.
Oh, good, 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 good.
Okay? You're welcome. Next.
Hi, Mary Short. First of all, I want to address my, um, question to Councilwoman Burke, and it's not...
Councilwoman, not Councilman.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilperson, Burke, women, okay? Uh, I don't appreciate the comments you made about the DPDW, the workers. First of all, I represent them, OPI, okay? And we're not here, I'm not a student, and I, I want to also address, I live in Essex County, I don't live in Belleville, but I, if it's fifty-five and over, I'm, I can apply. And I think I will come just to be in Belleville, town chairman.
I think you should.
You, you know, you make comments that you shouldn't make, now, we're going to deal with the nigger comment.
No, you keep saying that, ma'am.
Well, you're here, you're here.
You're the ones that keep saying that.
And you made, excuse me.
You know what, I'm not going to answer her, so...
No, I don't want you to answer me, but what I want, before you...
Don't come here with...
Before you call names, you take short of the name called, because, see, we ain't in the damn fifties, we in two thousand and fourteen, and we cannot be called, my name is Mary Short.
Shut up, Councilman Rogell. Wow, come on, you're all together, guys.
Now, first of all, nobody, I can't kiss my ass, so I ain't kissing nobody.
Oh, my God.
Nobody, so you, so don't, don't assume we're bored, everybody's not bored. Everybody is not bored.
What did you say?
That she is the floor.
No, Murphy just said, said that's a lot of...
No, I didn't take exception, she's got the floor, Councilwoman.
But why he choose to whisper to him?
She's got, was I pointing, I didn't whisper.
Because, you know what?
I was running after the mayor that she's got the floor.
Yeah, that's true, you are.
And you continually interrupt Congress, and I'm not the floor.
You know, uh, I don't, you need to play politics, you know, but I'll tell you as a witness, everybody that I know that live in Belleville, everybody that go to church in Belleville, everybody that work in Belleville, I will knock on every freaking door to make sure you're not elected, because you know what? And you know what, yeah, they clapping their head, but I don't need no applause, because one thing I say, God, well, I can stand flat foot and say whatever I want to say, and since you assume, and I'm an African American woman, can say, I'm a woman and you're a woman, and I'm a union member, and you say you are, but you can't treat union members, you call guys who clean up, probably on your street, you call them names in front of their faces. I appreciate you didn't say it behind the back, right? That I appreciate, but some, before you speak, think sometimes. Ask the Lord to help you guide your speech, because I take offense to the name you just called. I still will take offense to this, and that I will not be a name. If you can't address me as Mary, call me a lady. Matter of fact, call me a woman, okay? Don't, uh, call me nothing else, because we all make mistakes, including you and everybody here and everybody, including Mary. And when we make our mistakes, we need to own up to them. And sure, evidently, you want to be the mayor, but if it's not your time, God will not allow you to win. And you remember that, okay? And the next thing you remember, when you did one dish for anybody here, you better did two, because the one you did it for us might be for you.
Hey, ma'am, this, could you just state your name?
Hi, Ms. Swin, well, um, I'm Belleville resident, I've been a Belleville resident for almost fifty years now. Um, I've lived here, my parents have lived here, my grandparents have lived here, we've done a lot of work for the town. Um, it came to my attention some comments that were made, Ms. Burke, and I know Ms. Burke, she might not remember me, um, my in-laws lived in Silver Lake, grew up in Silver Lake, own property in Silver Lake. Um, I was appalled, because I thought I knew you. Um, when I heard, and I know you know about it, the, um, tape recording of the conversation of the message that was left that allegedly was you, and allegedly used the nigger word, okay? Um, now, I'm saying allegedly, because I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt. I can play it for you if you haven't heard it, but to date, about two thousand people in this town have heard it, okay? And I would like to play it, have you heard it?
Play it.
Play it.
Play it.
Play it.
Play it.
Play it.
You could play anything you like, it's not me, I will not go into this again.
Okay.
Yes, so wait, so wait, so wait.
Councilwoman Kennedy, she made a hundred...
Wait, wait, so I have a question for you, and this is, this is going to, this is going to go toward you.
Yeah.
If you did not make the comment...
Yes.
And it is not you, okay? Then, with these people, and you know who they are, they put this tape out, and as you referred to Mr. Kennedy...
Right.
Are you going to go about defamation suits against them? For why? Because this is, this is a very heavy-weighted issue, and, and if this was me, and this was put out there by people against me, and I'm running to represent this town, then I would be filing a defamation suit quick, fast, and in a hurry.
Why would I do that if I didn't say it, ma'am?
That's the reason...
Because I would not say it.
I would not, I would not reiterate that again. I do not say it. If there's anything you like, you know my...
I will, I will, I choose to.
That's fine, do whatever you like.
Number one, second, I'm sorry. It does downgrade the town, and this is, and this is what represents us, and the thing about it is, if I didn't say this, I would definitely be suing somebody, very quick, okay? To clear my name, at least, and that's what I'm saying, is I would want my name cleared. If you don't mind. No, it's not that, I can't get it, you know, that. Yeah, oh, no, I have it, it's up. Okay, so this is what I heard, and as I said, if this is me, I would definitely want to clear my name.
Well, it's not you.
But I'm, I'm.
You know what, just play the tape, please.
I'm sorry that I, that I'm offending you.
You're not offending me.
I don't think you have a right to offend.
You are not offending me.
I stopped by Marie's house, and she told me she had a conversation with, uh, Kimball. And Kimball's in the vote for, I mean, sure. So, I guess you, you become very important. Because I know that she got John and Marie. So, I guess it's up to you whether, I mean, it's a party or not, if Kimball's telling Marie the truth. But that's what he told her, that he swore, uh, he's got a vote for, he promised her he's got a vote for, I mean. So, I just thought you might want to know. So, all right, do the right thing. By the way, I understand that tax bills are out, and, and, uh, some people got fifteen hundred dollar raises on two family houses, and Marie's bumper's ringing off the wall. I don't know what the hell that's all about.
What is that about now? I don't want it, I don't want it to come to you.
I don't know. I thought they were working on them, I thought they got it down to five something, top down in, uh, the photograph. Some people are going to call you too, so forget about it. All right, I'll talk to you, Ken, bye. Tuesday, six thirty.
Now, to me, that sounds like you.
You're a voice expert?
Well, you know what, the thing about it is that, and the only thing I can say to you is that I'm not a voice expert. I've heard your voice over the years, like I said, you might not remember who I am. But I, but I thought, I thought I knew you better.
Well, I guess you don't.
I guess I do. But the voters will know you better.
We'll say.
We will say. The voters will know you better.
Well, I'm sorry, I just can't hear you.
Barbara Lozoff, seven twenty-five, you're on, she's in Bellevue. I have a question. It's my understanding that Mr. Kennedy is the one that's putting this tape out, but it's my understanding that he's had it for four or five years. If he found it defended now, why didn't he find it defended?
No, I hadn't, it's been for two years, and I'm not putting it out. And we were emptying out our answering machines at the house six months ago, and that's when I came over. Sam Papel, when he closed my house.
Two years?
Yeah.
We don't have records, we don't.
All right, Barbara, well, doesn't matter, she said it. She said it, is that her voice, Barbara? Barbara, is that her voice?
What, what was your political agenda for it?
I had to explain myself.
Oh, okay, but everybody else does, right?
No, I didn't say that, she said it. Okay. You're right, she didn't say it at all.
You're right. I remember just said that. The problem is, if he found it defended now, why didn't he find it defended?
That's David Yarrow. Don't call me all that a lot again. I just, just a comment that was made before, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Burke said something that she don't want people from other counties living in that building.
I didn't say that, not other counties. I said it would be open to the entire county, which would prevent Bellevue residents from going first. That's what I said.
Well, I think two years ago, when we were getting friendly house money, that's all, all county. So, when you were pushing to get the money to build a friendly house, it was okay for all the counties to come in. And now it's not okay for other towns in the county to come in, and now it's different. I'm just asking a question, you don't have to answer me, Councilwoman.
No, no, I will answer you. I will answer you.
And once I finish, and the other statement, just going back to the tape, and that was made two years ago. So obviously, it was made during, when you ran for election in two thousand and twelve. You made those alleged comments.
Actually, it was four years ago, but Councilwoman Kennedy said. The reason why, the reason why, Mr. Kobe Yellow, Mr. Kobe Yellow, that you are saying these things is because you ran, you ran for election, and I beat you, and you did not like that, so of course you had to jump. This is like, this is like, no, no. But first of all, the friendly house is different from, from the senior housing we're talking about. We have people that are, that are losing their homes. There's no place for them to go. Why would we want to have the entire Essex County in there and not allow our Bellevue residents to be there first? That's what I'm saying.
But not for two months? So it's okay for one, not for the other?
No, no, friendly house.
Thank you for clarifying, Councilwoman.
You're welcome. You're welcome, I'm sorry.
And, and I don't think anybody in this order, if there's people in need of housing, would, uh, rather see them on a street than be placed in a.
They're on the street now, Mayor. Homeless.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring something up about the garbage. Um, when is the garbage for the Board of Education, uh, picked up? Because, um, now that we have the new procedure, uh, their dumpsters are not emptied over the weekend. When the garbage was gathered on Friday night, you got the lunches from all the kids in all the schools in town. So naturally, we're going to draw rodents if this garbage is not picked up. And I've noticed it for several weeks now, and I'm watching this eventually to see if we're going to have any running around on the lawn over there. And as far as the, the, uh, the senior housing, everybody knows when you take federal money, it's open to anybody, right in the entire country, just like our club is open for whoever wants to come in, unless we are using it and we have booked it for all our meetings, which we have. And now, there's people coming in, because I'm an officer over at the club, they've been coming in and asking me where they sign up for the housing. They're coming from all over, but they first want to know too, at the club, if we serve hot meals. No, we do not serve hot meals at the club. We are a club for meetings, and there are several clubs in there, not just the seniors. So there's a lot there that has to be understood, because, uh, when it comes to the senior club, I think this council knows how I feel about over there, and there are a lot of DPW men sitting behind me who know how I feel about it, because they've been over there, they're listening to me while they are cleaning up the place and doing a fantastic job for us of painting over in that building and cleaning it up, uh, it, it's unbelievable. And now we'll be getting some new carpeting over there. But yeah, we have restrictions, you have to have, you can't just let it be open here or there. But as far as the housing, yes, a lot of the Bellevue seniors would like to get in there, but unfortunately, you take government money, that's it. I have a niece that lost her home in La Vele. She just now was told she's getting money, because she joined a class action suit, and was told if you drop it, you'll get the money. She's finally able now to move forward, almost two years, to finally get back to her home. And you go down there in La Vele and see how many of those lots are still empty to people that unfortunately, I'll use myself as an example, if I were white now, nobody's going to employ me because of my age. But, again, where would I get the money to put up another house? Naturally, I would have to leave it, and that's it. So, I can understand the feelings of all the people. I'm on a very fixed income, I don't have a pension, but fortunately, I can hang on to what I have, because I'm sensible with my husband through my married life. That to watch out for our old age, do many people do that? So, you know, there's a lot to take into consideration, and yes, we would all like it. Vinnie Frantantoni, I don't know how long ago, he proposed forming our own thing here in town, and the rents, we pay for the building. And you know now, that that is something that could have solved it, but unfortunately, it went, by the way, and nothing was done to bring in, and, you know, to form our own group to have this senior housing just for Bellevue people. So I don't think we can argue the point anymore as to who's going to live in it. Because you have to know now, anybody that comes along and qualifies is going to live in it. That's it. Thank you.
I have a motion, pause. Second?
Southie Grandy, three thirty, Jerome Street, Bellevue, New Jersey, lifelong resident of Bellevue, born and raised in Silver Lake. Councilwoman Burke, you have a lot of nerve, okay? First of all, first of all, to refer to my fellow workers and my supervisors as stooges. We are not stooges, and we will never be puppets like you are right now, okay? Working with the devil. You said time and time over again, I will, I deceive him, I don't want to be with them, they're horrible. In your cousin's store, who happens to be my close friend, okay? Many times, well, that's his choice, not mine, because I talked to him before I came in front of his council the last meeting, okay? You're an ignorant person. I seen how you operated at the Silver Lake party the other night. Okay? I'm born and raised in Silver Lake, I have a lot of friends, okay? Again, I will tell you something. Resign with dignity before you're embarrassed on election day. Okay? That's all I got to say to you.
Through the chair, I would like to read something here. Mr. G. Grandy, number one, I'm very ashamed that you even call yourself a Silver Lakeer.
Oh, yeah?
People in Silver Lake have no use to you whatsoever.
Oh, they don't?
Now, I want to, no, no, I want to speak, I am a councilperson and I will speak. That's what you want to do that all the time, Mr. Kennedy, okay? Mr. G. Grandy, you sent out something today in the mail. You are not, you are, I have it right here, don't you deny it, okay?
Oh, the coach's letter, I'm proud of that.
Coach's letter? You cannot put people's children's addresses and send them things, that's against the law.
They're not children's addresses, they're federal addresses.
And, and, and take a picture of Kimball and Kennedy and send it in the mail, and it was taken in Town Hall. How dare you use Town Hall for a political playground? It's just a disgrace, okay?
I don't know anything about it. You're a board of.
And the other thing I want to say, first of all, I will apologize because I did say stooges, which was really a wrong thing to say. But, the reason why I said was because about six months ago, Mr., uh, Murphy, our town attorney, and our mayor Ray Kimball, took twelve to fourteen public works men to Atlantic City and treated them for dinner. So why won't the public works men be with them? Okay? You spoke already.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm not a senator, I only spoke two seconds.
You can't talk. Okay? All right, all right, let me get that, you can. And that happened not once, but twice. And I understand they took, some took in the afternoon, some took at night, okay? Now, that's not buying people's, that's disgusting, okay? And that's, yes, I do, and that is against.
Your granddaughter got chopped through your nose. You couldn't stand, but you have, you need a job, you don't want to support it. He sent out that flyer that all the.
Is this what you want as a councilman?
No, we want Marie who claims that I took twelve members.
Yeah, you did, right.
And then she behind the.
I did, I admit that I did go to dinner down Atlantic City, with maybe more than twelve members, not only the DPW workers, but outsiders, and we all paid our way. Me and Tom kicked in probably more than we were supposed to. But I did go to dinner, and I don't know if there's any law that says I can't go to dinner with them.
A Faulkner Act violation, ma'am.
It is not a Faulkner Act violation. You should learn to form a.
You don't know the sound of your own voice, Mrs. Burke. Mayor, may I responsibly put some casting dispersion on me?
On you?
Are there anybody, is there anybody in the audience from DPW that went, uh, to dinner in July, uh, with, uh, Mayor Kimball and myself attended? I guess we got there at about ten o'clock. Mayor Kimball and I, uh, we didn't have enough money, I don't think, to feed that whole table. I think everybody threw in exactly what it was.
Oh, my God.
And then, well, Mrs. Burke, this is how we, this is how we are.
We don't need anybody to pay for us.
No, we don't need to buy Frenchs. And then if, at Christmas time, we were flattered, the mayor and myself, absolutely flattered, to be asked, uh, by the DPW guys to go to dinner with them, uh, at Christmas time. Is there anybody in the audience that was at that dinner, that, uh, okay, so, and the manager was there too, uh, Mr. Nefrio, uh, a bunch of guys, or I guess there was about fifteen. And the same thing, everybody paid their own way. So, you know, before you start casting aspersions, Mrs. Burke, you really should have your facts.
Well, then, why did you have a meeting here, Mr. Murphy, and told me that it was, it was a Faulkner Act violation? And the mayor said to me, Marie, are you going to say it was a Faulkner Act? And I said, no, he said, okay, take, I have it all written at home, I will give you. I will bring you all the paperwork from the attorney, you're lying, Mr. Burke.
I, I'm, Mrs. Burke, do I have your, do I have your permission to get the document?
I have it home, yes, I will give you.
Do I have your permission and then to give it to the audience?
Of what you did? Yes.
No, of what you did.
No, no, I didn't, you're the one, you're the one that's good for law. I never saw a worse, I set up audience, I, you did a good job, I gotta say. No, 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 no.
You're the one that just started this meeting.
Nice set up audience, I think.
Charles Casino, one fifty-one, three, St. Avenue. Uh, this is to Kevin. We got about four apartments in front of, not, uh, just cut in the corner, but they're all in gap, on the St. Avenue. And it's starting to get pretty deep now. One woman had her tire blown out already. So if you can, I appreciate it. The body, your book.
Make a motion, pause. Second?
Alex, Mount Prospect, um, two questions. One, can we put or look into a speed bump on Mount Prospect and Leslie Terrace? I think that's a really tight curve, and there's a lot of schools, there's a school there, kids walk around that area. It's, some people act by pretty quick. I was looking, see if we could look into that. And two, is this, does, I'm a, uh, resident of Bellevue for, I guess, a year, lived in Newark all my life, I've never seen this.
You are, you are one hundred percent right, ma'am.
It's twenty-third of your life, so I'm going to sell my house to leave.
I don't blame you, I apologize.
Stephanie Paul, eight, uh, Watson Avenue, I've lived in Bellevue forty-some odd years, and my husband grew up there. Um, I have no agenda, I have no relatives in town that would, nor do any of us want to, we're secure in our position. Um, I would just like to say, a lot of people are offended here tonight. Um, I'm a pro myself at some of the things that are said, but I have to say as a volunteer that I have worked alongside Councilwoman Re Burke for many years, um, in a voluntary, um, status and functions that were not in the town. I've never witnessed any racism from her. I've always seen her treat people fairly. All the children of Bellevue, we got names free because of her. They weren't just white children or Italian children, they were poor old children. And I have seen her on a personal level, it wasn't just to show to the public, and, um, I've seen her with her own niece, who is biracial. And she loves that little girl, and I don't believe in my heart that a racist can do that, because they would not, they could not, because a racist is a hater, and she's not a hater. She's frustrated right now that I say, she's attacked, and feels, um, you know, like she's going to be attacked, and I, I don't feel bad, or, I grew up in Newark, I didn't grow up in Bellevue, I came here after high school. I've experienced racism both ways, okay? I was the minority, and it's not good to you, but I've never witnessed that from her. And I'm not saying that now because I have a agenda, I don't. I am her friend, but I'm friends with a lot of people in the town. And I, and I think it's a flaw, to call names and public officials who we know it in, if we don't think they're doing a good job, help them out. Um, I don't think that people should be slandered and called traitor and, and undignified names that I wouldn't even repeat, because, you know, a lady doesn't say something. And, um, I just wanted to say that from my heart and my head, and I would testify to that, and I would swear on a stack of boxes to be, and that's why I'm sorry if I was offended, but I was offended too, uh, at certain things, but not by Councilwoman Burke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, Devon Harris, it's great. Uh, I have a question on taxes. This is my first time ever coming to a meeting. My question is on taxes, how do we know that all the residents are paying taxes equally?
It's nothing up to be on taxes. The tax rate is equally distributed among all properties in the town. This state of New Jersey has an ad-hoc tax system, which means tax according to value. It's all based upon the value of your property. So, if a homeowner has a commercial building worth a million dollars, the same tax rate that's applied to the million-dollar properties applies to a single-family home that might be worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So everybody has the same rate?
The same tax rate as a property, all.
The same tax rate is applied to all properties throughout the township equally. And that's uniform throughout the state of New Jersey.
I own a two-family house, where I'm paying almost eleven thousand dollars a year. I understand in Silver Lake, there's a three-family house, and they're paying six thousand dollars. Why is there so much of a difference? And that's all wrestling up.
Basically, it all has to do with the value of the property. Sometimes property owners appeal, they get reductions. In some cases, a property owner could be older. I don't know the age of your house. Some of the homes...
My house was built in seventeen seventy-seven. Okay, it was all house, it was all... Yes. Every cost of the carry, add on to it, but they didn't meet the minimum, okay? They're not like this. I have gone to town to appeal it. Instead of going to county.
Did you ever provide evidence of the home's value?
No.
You should, you should do that. You should definitely do that. The time to do that would be in October. I understand your point. Recently, the Star Ledger introduced, or published a report, I wanna say about a month ago. And Belleville has the third lowest average tax bill in Essex County.
I saw that.
In your case, your home assessment is probably higher than the average home in town.
My house is a seven, that's two ninety-three four.
Okay, the average home assessment right now in Belleville is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, you are definitely higher than the average home in town. You bring in some of this between October fifteenth and October fifteenth...
Who do I go to to get it?
You can go to the Tax Assessment Office, okay? You got between October fifteenth and October fifteenth, you're gonna get an appraisal on your home before the twenty fifteen taxes is shown up. That would be the time to address the issue. It's too late to file a tax issue.
Okay, if I didn't refinance my house, and that, that, um, came in much lower.
Sometimes lenders have basically gone from one extreme to another. They used to be very liable with money, and now they're very conservative.
Well, I have nothing like that mortgage. Okay? Now, my house is not worth with the mortgage.
Pay some time, make sure you pay attention to the face, because you're not corporate, you're not a merchant.
Okay.
Make a motion for pause, Counsel.
Second.
Yes, Senator Cogrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Make a motion, move it to Senate agenda.
Second. Number three.
Call number three, Counsel.
There is required some additional language on taxes. And, uh, the one of the unions, the other, the presidents of both, the unions have agreed to do it. And I just wanna make sure that it doesn't operate to constitute a reopening of the contract. So, we want the employees and the unions to be able to do whatever they wanna do with these titles.
So, on the table, I think, or?
No, just add the language.
We're gonna add this language to it?
Pardon?
We wanna add this language to it. Is that what you're saying?
The language I put the pause on.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna pull three, and we add some language.
Yeah.
Pull a call of all on a consent agenda.
Campaigner Cogrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Gattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Rule number three. Second.
So, we wanna, uh, we wanna add this language into it, unless such inclusion operates to cause a reopening of a collective bargaining agreement.
Make a motion.
Thanks, sir.
Pull a call of all.
Campaigner Cogrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Gattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
New business?
Yes, I have, uh, just one thing. Again, I want to apologize for that word I gave you, stooges. But I just wanna say that this audience was stacked, which is, which is good. And I can bring as many as that were here tonight too. But I have done my job, I have done it right. And whatever you think of me, I am not a racist. As, as my friend Debbie DePaul said, I do have a niece who is biracial. I have people in my neighborhood, I can bring you about a hundred people here, African-American, Latinos, and whatever. I am not a racist. A racist means you hate everyone, and that is not me. I don't hate everyone. And what is happening here is the employees in this town do not, do not wanna lose their good thing of their big raises, okay? And promotions, and promises of voting for the mayor and council, and they'll get a promotion. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have two things. First, Kev, just please make, uh, you know, if, if this is true, we need to have the Health Department take a look at school number four, and coordinate with the board there.
I'm gonna pay attention to Florence's comments about the drug collection of the students.
Yeah, that too. Yeah, and I, I just wanted to clarify something for the record here. After our township meeting on March twenty-fifth, I feel there are a few issues that really do need to be clarified. Mr. Longo from the Board of Education inferred that a covert political meeting took place on March eighteenth in the Town Hall. Although Mayor Kimball, Councilman Kennedy, Township Attorney Tom Murphy, Township Manager Kevin Estacio, and myself were in attendance at that meeting on March eighteenth, it had nothing to do with politics. Mr. Longo failed to mention the three other individuals that were there at this meeting. Those three individuals in attendance are candidates for our magistrate judge position. We were there after normal working hours to interview the final candidates for that position. The same thing is, although overshadowed by this political posturing that night, the council and Mayor Kimball appointed Belleville's first Latino judge. Now, did anybody, anybody know that out there?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. On the issue of discrimination, I would like to express my beliefs as well as I believe those of Mayor Kimball and most of the council. We embrace and celebrate Belleville's cultural diversity. Negative comments about individuals' race, color, religion, sexual orientation, or ethnicity is unacceptable and hurtful. As public officials, we are tasked to represent all the people, not just a select few. The last issue I would like to speak to is in reference with the township employees. I've always believed that our mission as councilmembers is to serve the residents, protect the taxpayers. The people that help us fulfill that mission are our township employees. It is the council's job in conjunction with the township manager to give our employees the tools, as well as the motivation, to deliver the best services possible to our community. They cannot do so if they're harassed. They cannot do anything if they're threatened or bullied. After what occurred at our council meeting on March twenty-fifth, we have a responsibility as a council to investigate the allegations. I do not believe a councilperson or any other public official should get a free pass on issues of discrimination and political harassment. And I do ask for one favor at the end of all this. I ask that the community continue their prayers on behalf of us, as well as my family. May the Almighty Keepers protect all our residents and our employees. God bless you all. I need to go speak on the new business, but I, I have to make a couple comments in regards to what Councilwoman Burke stated.